All right, welcome to Lake Mills City Council meeting. It's September 20th, 2022. I'd like to welcome Drake Daly to his, as our new city manager, to his first city council meeting. So, welcome Drake.
Welcome.
All right, Misty, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Correction and our approval of city council minutes at September 6th, 2022. Hopefully, everyone got a chance to read those. I know there was some last-minute revisions, but I think that covered everything. Is there any questions or suggestions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. What, uh, we should have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve them, and it's from the city council meeting of September 6th.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. That's 5-0. Passes. Okay, we move to questions and public comment.
I think we have correspondence.
I just want to get right to it.
I guess you do.
Correspondence. I'll start. I had a couple positive EMS messages. Invite to Club 55's annual meeting, which is coming up the end of September. Some bike lane correspondence on both sides. Sandy Beach Project correspondence. Invite to a grand, to the Topol's grand opening, which is actually this weekend. And Summer Ridge Groundbreaking, which is coming up, I think, the end of September. I don't have the date on that, but that was my correspondence. Ms. Curler?
I had similar. In addition, I had a contact regarding beach safety and a request about posting advisories in addition to the beach closures.
Okay. Mr. Fields?
My list is exactly the same as what yours was, so same correspondence.
Okay. Mrs. Bishop?
I'm checking my list. Yes, I think I had the same correspondence as Mr. Fields and you, Mr. Waters.
Ms. Quidnow?
Same exact correspondence.
There we go. All right. Now, we'll get to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right, so the floor is open for public comment.
This is for the Rock Lake Improvement Association, PO Box 255, Lake Mills. And my name is Susan Trier, and I'm the president of the Rock Lake Improvement Association, or the RLIA. Our organization's mission is to promote actions that preserve, protect, and improve Rock Lake. Fifty-one percent of our members own shoreline property on Rock Lake, and overall, 35% of our members are city residents. During a recent survey, our members asked us to increase our presence with the city and the township governance and to be proactive with that communication, and so that's why I'm here. The ZBA, or the Zoning Board of Appeals, is a critically important board for the health of Rock Lake. It has the responsibility to uphold, and in a very few cases, the authority to override the city's lakeshore ordinance, which was developed to carefully balance the interests of private property owners, the lake itself, as well as all the users of the lake. ZBA decisions carry quasi-judicial weight and cannot be overturned without legal action. It is an extremely difficult board to be on because you meet nice people, often your neighbors, who want to do nice things to their property, and more often than not, you have to say no. The duty of the ZBA is to make decisions based on state statutes, case law, and local ordinance. They must apply the law as it is written. An ordinance is only effective if it is consistently enforced and adhered to. Consequently, RLIA advocates for the following. Number one, additional demonstrable and documentable training for new ZBA members, as well as continued training updates for existing board members. This training should include an emphasis on the legal standards for granting of variance, including hardship, uniqueness of property, and no harm to public interests. This training should be done as a group so that members can develop working relationships with each other and to assure that the training is taken seriously. The city council, this is number two, provides oversight to the ZBA. All ZBA members need to understand that the city council expects the board's decision to meet legal standards. City council's oversight should be meaningful and ongoing. A comfortable working relationship between the city council and the ZBA board is highly encouraged. And then the last point is, the city council should direct city staff to draft a strategy and a plan to educate city residences on the purpose and the value of the city's shoreline variances, or, excuse me, shoreline ordinances. Enforcement is much easier when residents support the purpose behind the regulation. The city has multiple partners who can assist the city in its efforts, including the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department, the Joint Rock Lake Committee, and of course, our organization, the RLIA. No doubt, the city council has a lot on its plate. Meaningful oversight of the ZBA could be one of those items you delay acting on because there's not a contentious issue facing the board. But that's the point. If there's community contention, it's too late to enforce training. And there have already been tensions on shoreline zoning. The time to work on this issue is now. Thank you for your careful consideration.
Susan, I got a couple things real quick while you're up there. I had the privilege of having a recent conversation with you, but it sounds like the governing body of, the governing body for the city and the township on the lake is the Joint Rock Lake Committee, and it sounds like you, the Rock Lake Improvement Association, is having a joint meeting with them in October, which is a nice first step. So, thank you for your part in helping with that. So, that's a nice step.
Yes.
Also, you had mentioned the council has oversight of the ZBA, and the only oversight I think we have is appointing members. The decisions that come from the ZBA does not come back to the council, so we really don't have an oversight on that part of it.
Absolutely. You don't have oversight on what they decide, but you do have ability to indicate to them how the training should be implemented. I believe that can come from city council and that it really can't come from city staff to say, "You have the responsibility to take a test," or review existing cases that were decided and talk about whether the decision was a valid one or not. You know what I mean? So, that could come from the city council, and that's the kind of oversight I was thinking, rather than someone on the city staff.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that.
Oh, yeah. No, you can't overturn it. That would be a judicial decision, absolutely.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Susan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Doyle, 325 East Washington Street, Lake Mills. This really started last week when a member of the Public Works Board contacted me and said I probably should take a look at the video of the last Public Works Board meeting. And I did that, and the discussion was about, Mr. Fields was giving information from this podium to the board about individuals that had contacted him about putting a, putting bike lanes down Lake Street. Yes?
That was me, not Mr. Fields.
No, I'm sorry. Did I, I'm sorry.
It's okay. That's all right.
Mr. Wat, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I did watch that, that video and was a little concerned, and Greg, with all due respect, when Mr. Temporley made the comment asking if, with the prospect of potentially taking parking off the street on Lake Street, that considering how damaging that would be for our business, considering that we do use a lot of street parking, which actually was discussed with the city when we started 14 years ago, and his surprise that we hadn't been contacted or no information had been shared with us about that, because he felt it would be very damaging to our business. And to be very honest, he seemed very taken back, and Greg, with all respect, it didn't appear that you did. So, I became very concerned. At that point, we started gathering the troops. We wanted people to come and show support for that. Since that time, I today was able to either talk with or meet with five city officials and discuss that further, and they assured me that my perception of that meeting may not have been complete and that, from their perspective, they were simply at a beginning stage. Greg, we had contacted you, and the reply we got at that time was, "I had several inquiries from Brookstone residents requesting a bike route to the downtown area. They prefer East Lake Street as it is a direct bike route that provides easy access to downtown businesses." Earlier this year, which I believe was March, I asked city staff to review and work with the Public Works Board on a recommended route before bringing it to the city council. The meeting last night was the second time it was discussed with the PWB, and they were, they asked staff to further, to review further and present options to them at a future meeting. If a recommendation is made, it will then be presented to the council. So, if this was the second time this had come up, that's where the concern came in with that. After today's meeting, it sounds like they, what was communicated to me is that, no, it is not moving along, that they are simply at a data gathering stage with this procedure. And we had a very, very good, open meeting discussing this today. So, to share some data, taking away the street parking over there for us, we are a volume business. We sell a low-priced item, and volume is what is needed. Taking street parking away would be about 50 to 70% of our parking over there right now, not to mention the impact on families that live on that street. And a lot of the older houses in town have small drive-boys, small garages, and as the kids go into high school, cars multiply, and they regularly use that street parking as part of what they do. In the process of coming to tonight, people have communicated with us that in their neighborhoods, where there is a lot of traffic flow, they in fact will purposely park their cars on the street because it slows traffic down. That's not something that occurred to me, but that's what they said they did. Our other main concern was that this is a truck route, and adding more bike traffic on a truck route, I don't care if you paint a line down, that's not going to protect anyone. And our business is located there. We watch the truck traffic on that road. We lobbied this body for three years to get pedestrian signs put up and a crosswalk put across to try to notify traffic and slow them down. Initially, we were told that the signs can't go up because they could only be within so many feet of a crosswalk, and you don't have a crosswalk, so we can't put the signs up. After three years of pushing, the signs are up, the crosswalk is there. We also put out our own, we call them the kids, we put them out on the street to try to slow traffic down, make them aware that something is going on here. So, the, being a truck route, I really don't see that encouraging more people to use that as a bike lane is really a safe thing to do. My other concern with some of, with bikes is that there are many people that are very responsible with their bike, and there are some that I questioned whether bikes are preferred on the road because when it comes to stop sign, there is no stop. Happened this past weekend. I was coming to an intersection downtown, and a mom and her young son never even thought about stopping, they just shot right through. So, there is concern with safety. The other part, going back to communicating information, I was, and my wife were part of the roundtable interviews with the new candidates coming in, and to be very honest, at that time, I was surprised at some of the comments coming out, that the residents were very open and honest, that they felt that the communication lines between them and the city government were not good at all. And they were very open about that, and in talking to people after the meeting, it appeared to be a common theme from table to table. So, I guess I'm hoping that this whole thing comes down to that maybe communication lines can open up. We had a very, very positive meeting this afternoon. Drake, we were part of that, and it just seems that it's a direction we need to go. Simply posting information that something is happening is not effectively communicating. Being on the administrative side of things myself, communication is a very difficult thing to pull off.
Sorry to cut you short. Can you summarize?
Yep, I'll wrap it.
Thank you.
Yep. Maybe this is a, can be a positive step to move forward, but I really think bringing the community in to discussions early is going to be in everyone's best interest. Thank you.
So, Patrick, it sounds like you understand where we are in the process with the bike lanes at this point, that the Public Works Board basically gave the city staff authority to make recommendations, to review the process, and come back. At this point, no route has been determined, so that is still something that the city staff is reviewing. It will go back to Public Works before it actually gets referred to this council.
Correct.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure we're on the same page there.
No, it was a very positive meeting this afternoon, very open, very honest, and it felt good. And, I mean, I think the more open, honest conversations that can happen between city officials and the community, we even talked about the possibility of maybe an open house where, where community members not to do business, they just come in and meet who's in charge of this and who's in charge of that. And how good would it be, rather than just not knowing where to talk, you know which person is in charge of what, and you go to them first? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Doyle?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Doyle, 325 East Washington Street. Thank you, city council. Welcome, Mr. Daly. It's a pleasure to have you. I'm here to, I'm kind of a follow-up with Pat, but I'll keep it short. I'm here to talk about the gathering of information about bike lanes on Highway B/Lake Street. I would like to add my thoughts, although I'm not alone in these thoughts. First and foremost, it's unsafe. Bicycle lanes provide a false sense of safety, specifically on a truck route. At a time when everyone is driving faster and more distracted, encouraging more distraction with bicycles and ATVs, it puts everyone at risk. As a pedestrian walking my dog on Highway B/Lake Street, cars do not stop even though I'm within the painted lines of a crosswalk. As an adult, I'm fully aware of my surroundings. I shudder to think about kids regularly on this route. We've already lost one too many 18 years ago on Lake Street and Washington. My dear friend, Tom Klein, was on his way to work on his bicycle in the right-of-way when he was struck and killed by two distracted drivers. No one wants this ever to happen again. There are safer roads to teach our children to travel on when riding their bikes. Elimin, in my opinion, eliminating parking opens up a racetrack. Encouraging bicyclists on a truck route is impractical and downright dangerous. Recently, a bicyclist was hit on the new bike lanes on Highway A. Luckily, she's alive. If this ever comes to a vote, please vote no. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Doyle?
No, thank you.
Thank you. The mic is open?
Doug Devan, 228 Water Street, and welcome to our new city manager. Three times I tried last week to come in and say hi, and you were so busy that it was impossible, so welcome. Elections have consequences, and the school board has unanimously approved a referendum for November 8th to be on the ballot, which will amount to about $44.95 million. We know how those individuals feel about it because it was unanimous vote for. Per our city attorney, I would like to ask the parliamentarian, which is President Waters, to possibly put as an agenda item, a discussion about how the council members feel about it, knowing full well you don't have to make a decision or even give us your opinion. However, elections have consequences, and it is important for us to know because people are supportive of, against, and have no opinion of the referendums that is coming up. So, to you, Mr. President, and the parliamentarian, at the request of-
Oh, hold on, sir. It's not per the city attorney, it's not at the request of the city attorney. I actually spoke to you before this, and I told you-
Yes, I would have-
...that I advise the council not to go this direction.
I, I, I have not-
I'm sorry, I interrupted your public comment. Excuse me.
Okay. I'm requesting, since you are the parliamentarian and have access to the ability to put on as an agenda item, since elections do have consequences for, for, even though it's a nonpartisan group here, how the individual board, council members feel about the potential tax risk for property taxes, which is proposed by the school board at $68 per $100,000 property value. And it would be nice, for transparency purposes, if the board members would tell us how they feel about it, if they're for it, against it, or have no opinion, because transparency and, and clearing of what is going to be an election issue in the future is important for voters to know how you feel about such an issue, even though they apparently put the tax levies on the property tax and you have no control of that. But you do have an opinion as to whether it's worthwhile or not, and that's what I think voters who will be voting for you in the future need to know. As far as the bike lanes, I spoke with a police officer the other day, and he said, "All we do is enforce the law on bicycles." And yet, in front of Sentry, you see, and on the park, Commons Park, you see no bicycle signs allowed, and yet bicycles continue to use that sidewalk. And I don't think any citations or tickets have been given. The second thing is, these bike lanes cost hundreds of thousands, if not more dollars, to put in at taxpayer expense. And a car that travels on a highway or a city road, if they don't have a license, the fine is $90 per vehicle, per attempt of no license. Bicycle licenses are required, but probably no citations have been given for people without a license. And yet, if they use this bike lane, or any bike lane, or are on the street, it's a taxpayer expense, and a bicycle license should be required, and if not, a bicyclist should be liable without a license to pay a fine and penalty. And I guess that's all I have to say. And I hope that an agenda item to express your opinions on the price of the property tax can be, can be done so the citizens, citizens know where you stand on, on this tax increase that's going to occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Devine?
No.
Hang on.
Possible for 10 seconds.
Excuse me?
On a side issue, possible for 10 seconds to finish something, please.
I want to address Mr. Devine real quick here. I, I don't really have to address your question during this meeting because it's not an agenda item, but I'm gonna go ahead and address it, that I don't feel that the school referendum is the business of the city council, so I will not make that agenda item forcing these members to make a comment on that. If they want to make comment on their own, that's up to them, but it won't be an agenda item on the city council business.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but it is also important for the citizens who will be voting for upcoming elections to know your stand on that, and it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr.? Are we okay with suspending the rules here for Mr. Doyle? Everybody in favor?
It's quick.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, because once you start this, this is on your agenda tonight, and once you start discussing, we're not allowed to, to comment at all. When you're talking about the ATVs tonight, along with bicyclists, some bicyclists that don't follow the stop signs and things of that, that nature, just so there's some discussion concerning ATVs, especially going down to 16, if they're using the, the streets as, I believe, what I read in the agenda items tonight is being considered, is being looked at, that, that, if you're on the road, you're using all those things, that you're stopping at the stop signs, you're, you are now a vehicle on the road, and by the time you're discussing it, we can't comment. So, we just, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thanks. Any other comment? The mic is open, going twice. Anybody online? All right. The question and public comment are closed at this point. Thank you for all the comments tonight. Let's move on to Agenda Item 7, which is City Manager's Report. Mr. Daly? The items are included in your packet. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them or ask a member of the staff to assist me. Any questions on any of the city manager reports tonight? Yes?
I have two questions on the two budget items, the capital budget and the general fund, so whether Drake or Sam wants to answer, answer these. Just was curious, on the, under the capital budget, year-to-date, looks like some of the equipment has not yet been purchased, and I know we've heard, you know, at Public Works, and I think at the council as well, that some of this equipment, you know, there's supply chain issues, things are delayed. So, does that care- So does that carry over to next year if that, if it doesn't end up getting purchased in this budget year, and then how is that tracked? Or Dwayne can answer.
We're not arguing. We've been talking about how that's been handled in the past, and with the transition to Sam, how we want to track that accounting-wise in the future. But you're exactly right. Some of these items are delayed and will potentially go forward. In the past, if you recall, Betsy would come before you in either November or December and mention items or line items that would be, that would move into the next year. It happens a lot on, say, construction projects. For example, Sam and I are reviewing right now Lake Street's final bills that just came to us here in '22. Most of that project was done in '21, but there was some carryover from that budget in '21 into '22 to pay for that final change order and any of the, any of the retention or retainage that was on that account. Does that help explain?
Yes.
And Sam, go ahead.
I do have a spreadsheet with reserved funds, and actually Steve brought up at, I think, last month's meeting, on the capital, you'll see a line that wasn't budgeted for. It was the $99,000, and I apologize, I said it was PPE for the fire department. It was actually the radios. So I apologize for that, but that radio money was budgeted for last year. It was in the reserve fund. But I wanted it specifically to show, no, it wasn't budgeted for this year, it was last year's purchase that didn't come. Well, the radios just took forever for the, to get complete, so I do track it on a spreadsheet.
Okay, that's great. And then, actually, I had a follow-up question both for the capital budget and the general fund. I just, I guess I just want to make sure that the council can understand and that you're tracking unreserved fund balance versus reserved funds, and that, you know, we always have to remember that those are two different things--
Yes.
--because we often talk about, well, what could we, you know, do we have the right amount in the unreserved fund? But I certainly don't want us to be tapping into something that is reserved that was approved in a prior year, so--
Right. I track the reserved, not the unreserved. When a purchase is needed mid-year that wasn't budgeted for, that's where that unreserved funds comes into effect.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Any other questions? CNN, let's move on to Item 8 on the agenda, which is Council Member Board Reports and Acceptance of Minutes from the Library Board on January 17th, 2022, February 21st, 2022, March 21st, 2022, and April 18th, 2022. Oh, one more, and May 16th, 2022. And Parks Board on March 16th, 2022. So I know the Library Board crossed over between two board members. At the beginning, it was Ms. Kurler, and at the end, it was Ms. Quidnow. Any comment or discussion on those items? Pretty straightforward? And the Parks Board, March 16th, that was probably still Ms. Kurler, wasn't it?
No, I've never been on the Parks Board.
Oh, Parks, that was Ms. Quidnow still.
That was me.
Anything there?
No.
All good. Any questions, comments? CNN will accept these minutes into our report. Council Business. Item A is a Board Committee Appointment of Mary Schmeiger to Public Works Board for remaining term ending 2024. So that's my appointment. And we had some great candidates, actually, for this opening. It was a joy to review that. And Mary actually is a, is retired from American Family Insurance. She was an executive there. She currently is on the Edgewater College Board and the International Women's Forum Board. As an executive at American Family, she was the chief administration officer for nine years and was accountable to the buildings, real estate, and facilities, and was responsible for that throughout the American Family complex. And she managed projects with large capital investments. The budget that she worked with was just through the roof. $320 million operating budget and $3 million in capital budget, so a lot, a lot going on there. Her former boards was the St. Mary's Hospital, Madison Regional Economic Partnership, Madison College Foundation, and United Way of Dane County. So brings a lot of great experiences to the Public Works Board, so she is my appointment. If I can get a motion to approve.
I move to approve the appointment of Mary Schmeiger.
Schmeiger?
Schmoeiger. Okay. Well, I didn't say it right.
We're gonna mispronounce that. Sorry, Mary.
I move to approve your appointment, Mr. Waters.
I'll second.
So motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any further discussion? We can do a call of hands here. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's a 5-0. It passes. Next is discussion on the 2023 budget. So this is a discussion point. City staff, comment, please.
Thank you. The budget has not changed since you saw it at the first meeting in September. I'm hopeful that you've all been able to access it on ClearGov. If you're having any issues, please let me know. I've been spending the last week speaking with staff and working with Sam to start to wrap my arms around the budget that Mr. Wilkie presented, and Mr. Wilkie was kind enough to come in for a few days last week and give me a little bit of a crash course on his budget documents. And he had indicated that in the, in the past, at this second meeting in September, the city council typically discusses if they want to schedule additional work sessions, workshops on the, on the budget, or if you would like to prefer to handle it during your regular, regularly scheduled meetings, but we can schedule some additional meetings to discuss the budget and then questions that you may have. And I'll continue to work with Sam on seeing if there's any, any changes from a staff perspective that we might want to present to the city council, but at this time, it's just a matter of making sure you have access to it, and if you would like to schedule any additional workshops outside of your regularly scheduled meetings to work through that, the budget approval.
So last year, we had three, and we were a new council, but I found it very, very helpful. So I'm in favor of having some, at least two workshops, maybe three. How the rest of you feel?
Yep.
Yes.
So we'll get something on the schedule for that. We can maybe talk about that towards the end of this meeting, and when we're looking at the last agenda item, which is future agenda items. So, but yeah, we'd love to have, have something set up there. Probably, what's the timeframe that you're looking at, Drake? You, we probably need to do a lot of this in the October timeframe, right?
Correct. It'd be either the remainder of this month or October. I believe the, the public hearing is scheduled to occur in early November, and we wouldn't want budget approval to go much past that early November timeline in order to make sure we get all the information we need to, to the county. So certainly, September and October, we would want to make sure that we're at, we're at a place where we can present the budget document to the public at that public hearing.
Okay, so let's, let's look at that towards the end of this meeting, then. Go ahead.
Just something that occurred to me, one of the things that you're probably already aware, Drake, but that's important to this council, is to have good engagement and communication, not just with you, but with the department heads. And I wondered if we were gonna have, you know, two or three work sessions, whether it would make sense to focus on different parts of the budget at the first two, and maybe have some of those department heads there, particularly because you're, you know, new in your position, they can answer questions, help us to understand what the needs are of their different departments. So just, just an idea that I would have that might help structure those conversations and help us kind of walk through the different parts of the budget.
Sure. Yep, we can certainly do that. I would welcome the department heads to be able to come in and speak on the, on the budgets, on their individual department budgets, and answer any questions that the council may have. And also, we can work together on, you know, which, which day is which workshop works best to go over which, which budgets, but certainly, I think that would be beneficial.
Any other comments, questions? Yep. You're still on the floor, I guess. Go ahead.
Okay. I was depending whether I was gonna say anything more or not, but I think another, another thing I saw in my initial look, and it's described here in the budget summary, there's a 1.5% salary increase proposal across the board for all non-represented staff. And we talked about this a little bit last meeting as well, but I think that's something that we need to definitely pay some attention and have further conversations about what tools we want to use to address staff retention and making sure that we're competitive in our wages and doing, you know, other things that we can. May not be just salary, but other things to make sure that we're retaining and promoting high-quality staff. So to the extent that that relates to the budget and, you know, how much money we have available to pay current and future employees, I just want to make sure that we talk about that throughout our, our work sessions, because, you know, when you think about the resources that we have in Lake Mills that we value, we have Rock Lake, we have our beautiful history in downtown, and we have our staff. We have amazing staff here, and I think we want to, I just want to make sure that we are keeping an eye out on that and some of the challenges as we move forward in the budget conversations.
So thank you for keeping that general and not going specific.
Nope.
Thank you.
Broad brush.
Any other questions or comment? Go ahead.
I have a quick question, just because Drake and I both are new to this budget season. On the ClearGov, there's the bubble where you can ask a question. Did Mr. Wilkie address that at council, or did he address it through? Because Steve, I noticed you had a couple of questions on there, so I'm just wondering how the procedure was to address those questions. Did he address it through ClearGov, like respond to you through the ClearGov with your question?
Usually has in the past.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So it was kind of a way to communicate when you're asking specific items, because then I can page through and just look at the ones that are, have been highlighted or colored.
Okay.
I'm a little bit concerned about that from an open records standpoint. I don't know if, if those communications are being memorialized or anything else. I would prefer that such communication occur during work sessions or during your open sessions in the meeting. I just, I'm a little bit reticent there.
I know when we did that back and forth, he would review all those questions in the work session, so that they were out in the public. We would walk through them all so that everybody heard the same thing. You know, because if there was a line item that changed considerably up or down, there might just be a simple question about it.
Okay. Well, I did research. I have answers for you, but I will wait till work session to answer them then.
That's fine, too. That'll work.
I guess I would propose email there. I know that that's backed up. We have a server that stores everything. Maybe, maybe there's more, a more effective way to conduct that communication.
Is it possible to just put the commentary or comments or questions on there as a, as a discussion topic for when you get to meet the next time, that there's not correspondence?
Yeah, they'd certainly need to be memorialized and everything then. I don't know that that's a step that's been really contemplated at this point. What I suggest at this point with regard to open records is to memorialize those through an email account at the very least.
So you're saying if we make a comment in ClearGov, we should back that up with an email?
I think that's the most appropriate, or I don't even know if that's best practice right there. I think what I'm saying is avoid commenting in ClearGov until I know that that's being backed up and we can preserve it as a record if the board is communicating with staff in that manner. I was unaware that that communication was really occurring until I saw some commentary today, so--
Yeah, the ClearGov has that feature.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about that record being maintained, if it's a record. I haven't gone through a thorough analysis of this. I'm not sure that it is a record that requires being maintained, but I'd rather avoid that. And I think a better practice is to use a system that we know works, is backed up, that we have the ability to search, you know, like email.
Good with that? All right. Any other questions? We're still on the budget discussion. All right, CNN, let's move on. Item C is Resolution 22-47. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 22-47, signature authorization.
For City Manager Drake Daley. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-47, signature authorization for City Manager Drake Daley.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion, question? Well, I guess we should have a staff comment here. Be you, Mr. Drescher?
I believe Sam's got it. I think Sam's got it.
This resolution came before you when I was hired, and it's to remove Mr. Wilkie from all financial institution accounts and add Drake as an authorized signer, and I cannot implement that without a resolution.
Okay. Any questions or comments? CNN, there we go, there's a question.
I do. This may actually be for Mr. Drescher, so we're adding these people authorized to sign checks. Is there anywhere in here that we should specifically remove Mr. Wilkie?
That's, that may be advisable. I'm not sure what the practice of the financial institutions is, but it's atypical to have two named city managers, and because we have one that's on retired or on accrued vacation right now, I think that is a potential issue, and I think maybe taking that extra step would be appropriate if you want to amend the resolution to state and remove a former retired city manager, Steve Wilkie, as a payer or a signer on the account. That's probably appropriate.
So I could amend my motion to add, I propose to amend my motion to add a second, be it further, to add a--
Be it further resolved.
A be it further resolved, a first be it further resolved. This has be it further resolved that, that Steve Wilkie, retired city manager, shall be removed as one of those persons authorized to sign checks or withdraw money from public depositories.
No, second.
Dan, can I ask a question? Is that okay language, seeing that Mr. Wilkie isn't technically retired yet?
Well, he has notified us of his retirement. He's, he's out on leave.
Retiring?
I'm, I'm happy with the language. He provided notice to you and established the last date that he was in office. I'm confident that the record would show that. Technically, he is not retired at this point, but we are operating as though he is. I don't, I don't specifically see an issue with that language.
Thank you.
Does that seem like that would address what you raised, Kevin? Thanks for bringing that up.
All right, so the revised resolution made by Ms. Kurler, second by Mr. Fields. Any further discussion on that revision? So let's have a vote on the revision first, and then we'll come back and vote on the resolution with the revision.
I'm not sure that you need a vote on the revision, on the amendment. I believe that was Ms. Kurler's original motion, and it hadn't been voted on. It's really a question as to whether or not the second is maintained, and Mr. Fields made a point of stating that he, he did second, so I believe--
So we can make a motion, we can make a vote on, on this in general, then? Okay. Any further discussion, because we will be voting on the resolution in a whole with the revision of 22-47. No other comment? Rule call, please.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 22-48. Misty, can you read that resolution?
Resolution 22-48, increase of annual dog and cat license fees.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-48, establishing dog and cat licensing fees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
This is just part of a review of some of the fees in the, that the city is establishing that we may have fallen out of alignment on as far as what is a, what comparable communities are charging and to kind of keep up with that and as well as reflect the, the work and administrative review that goes into issuing the fees and ensure that the city is collecting adequate revenue. And as you could see, the, the current fees were quite low and had not been updated for a number of years. And so, this is just bringing it more into alignment with what the current market is bearing on fees of this nature.
All right. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Steve, I had a question on your memo there was, it looked like, or maybe it was on Jefferson County comparison data that you showed like a potential amount versus the actual amount. I'm trying to remember the exact word there. So, I just was curious if there's some kind of estimate that maybe not everyone is licensing their dogs and cats and so there's...
No, the potential would be if we raised the fees. What I'm currently proposing, that would be the potential revenue for a three-year span. And just, I don't know if Drake didn't realize it, but the last time these fees were looked at was '96. And the reason I'm bringing it before you now is we put these fees on a tax stuffer letter, which I have to get to the county. So, that's why I'm proposing now for the 2023 licensing period that begins in December.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for getting that, you know, thinking ahead and planning for that timing. Because one of the question I had, just for simplicity's sake, would it make sense to have the dog and cat fees be identical? Looks like the cat fee is lower for the altered, and I just wondered if it would be easier to have them be the same for administering.
We could. I, the cat fees, I just kind of went straight $10, altered or unaltered, just to try to simplify things in the office. But we could have them, we could make them the same as the dogs and cats, $10 and $15. I do know other municipalities are approx, they're the same as their dog and cat, or dog fees as the cat fees. There's not a whole lot of municipalities that charge for cats. It's not a state statute. So, you could potentially remove them if you wish. Because there's not very many, I think 163 maybe last year.
163 license? Okay.
It adds up, I guess.
To be honest with you, cats are in the house. A lot of people don't license them at all.
I'm sure that's true.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call on Resolution 22-48.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance 1238. This is the second reading. Misty?
Ordinance 1238, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance, section 609, vehicles, all-terrain, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right. So, there's no need for a motion on a second reading. Is there any comment tonight?
If I may, I just would like to share some information from the Public Works Board, which you have a recommendation from them that's included in the additional materials. And so, I know both Catherine and Greg were at that meeting, but for Michelle and Steve, just a little bit of an update. So, I, in preparing for the Public Works Board meeting, there was a lot of material to go through, and so I came up with a list of all of the things that the Public Works Board had discussed or ideas that were in different staff memos. And that's another document that's now been added to this ordinance 1238. So, that was all, all the possible things that had come up. And out of that, then, the Public Works Board voted to make two recommendations. One is essentially adding the requirements from Chief Selk's memo, which we've had previously. And the other one is to require some kind of a review after a date certain, you know, after the ordinance goes into effect to take a look at how it's working, you know, complaints, enforcement, you know, any other aspects that we would want to do. So, I just wanted to share with you the Public Works Board discussion. There was a lot of great ideas. We had people come and testify, so I think it was a worthwhile effort to spend that additional time to draw, you know, draw ideas out and get people involved. So, thank you for allowing the time for that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I have, I have one other question. I wonder if we could put Lieutenant Cedarwell on the spot since I see you sitting back there. One of our public commenters today said something about, you know, our AT, or asked, you know, our ATVs, when they're on the pavement, are they subject to like the same rules of the road? And I wonder if Lieutenant Cedarwell could just comment on that, verify that one there way there, because I've gotten that question too from constituents.
Microphone, please.
If you wouldn't mind, thanks. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I know you guys have gotten training on this, so...
And thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This will be the last city council meeting he ever comes to.
I'm only hiding my office in March. So, yeah, in short, the rules of the road, State Statute 346, does pertain to ATVs, UTVs. There's actually a little bit more enforcement that you can do as far as equipment violations under Natural Resource Code. Those are things that we're starting to learn. We've had DNR come in and try to train us on those things. But in short, yes, they do have to abide by those certain rules, and the city can also implement ordinances specific to ATV, UTV uses. For instance, you know, having to require a driver to have a driver's, a valid driver's license to operate an ATV or UTV right now, because that's not necessarily a requirement through state law at this point.
Great, thanks. I know one constituent had asked me about open carry or carry of open containers of alcohol. So, that would be something that's covered under the rules of the road, right? That would be prohibited.
Correct. There is a little bit of difference with alcohol laws when it comes to ATV, UTVs. You know, operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated in a regular vehicle, passenger car, truck, falls underneath a different statute than what it does for operating under the influence through ATV, UTV. It doesn't necessarily go or and/or affect their driver's license at this point. It's underneath a DNR code. So, a little bit lesser of a burden.
Thanks.
And I believe we are requiring driver's license in the ordinance? Okay. I just want to make sure. That's the way I remembered it, but I, quickly looking at it, I didn't see it. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's move forward. Ordinance 1243, this is the third reading. Misty?
Ordinance 1243, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance, section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 24607131241050. Owner, 454 Tyrenina Park LLC, 454 Tyrenina Park Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1243, amending the City of Lake Mills ordinance, 660-44, official zoning map for the owner, 454 Tyrenina Park LLC.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. So, this is a third reading, so that's why we took a motion, and there will be a vote on this issue tonight. Staff comment?
Dwayne, would you like to? Brian Carranza from Mead and Hunt is available online if you have any questions of him specifically, or Brian, if you have any comments that you would like to provide?
Yeah, memos were provided outline sort of the findings of fact as they relate to this particular issue. So, happy to answer any questions.
So, a yes vote on this would be to change it to a single-family residence? Is the way I read that correct?
Yes.
Could we get a little history on the property? Is how we got here at this point for our sake? I know a lot of it happened before we were council members.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide some context there. So, in sort of reviewing the kind of background of this, the property was originally zoned in industrial use as far back as I could find records, 2003 or prior to that. So, the existing use as a single-family residence has been non-conforming, you know, for quite some time. Since the rezone or the kind of wholesale zoning amendment to the zoning ordinance in 2015, that's sort of carried forward, and it goes under this new classification, which is general industrial. So, as far as the existing use, it's been single-family for quite some time, but non-conforming for, for the duration of time prior and to the current zoning ordinance. A building, a permit was submitted to sort of initiate the construction of an accessory structure that met the industrial standards or the non-residential standards, but was denied based on the, you know, circumstances that it is, that would require additional review under the Building Site and Operations Plan. And I guess I should just outline that it does not conform to residential standards for accessory structures as proposed.
Okay. But when this structure was originally built, was it built under proper zoning, or was there something happened that just changed along the way?
Yes. I would imagine it was originally built as a single-family residence under an appropriate zoning classification.
So, to be clear, it did fail at the Planning Commission. I guess I'm going to apply common sense here. I drive by the, I drive by the location, and it's obviously that residential house, it's, and it was built to be residential house. I'm not sure how it got zoned to what it is today, but I'm going to take a common sense approach and support this motion or support this ordinance to rezone it to the single-family residence.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious how it was a family resident, and then all of a sudden it got zoned commercial, whether there was a house on it without, I guess, us doing or the city making a provision for the residents there. I know it doesn't happen too often, but we have a couple of spots where we've got a house mixed in with commercial area.
So, if I could just kind of provide some additional context, the future land use map does also outline this area for industrial use, you know, in part because we don't want to have sort of an isolated use where there may be conflicts. So, I think way back as far as, you know, 2003 or prior, when it was zoned to an industrial use, it was contemplated as the future use or the next use after this structure was, was gone. It can remain as a single-family house, you know, under a non-conforming standards. It just can't be improved upon unless it follows the standards of the current zoning ordinance. So, nothing about its current classification would prevent it from being maintained and repaired as an existing structure that's not conforming as a single-family.
Right. You're saying it can be maintained, it just cannot be improved?
Improvements are outlined in the non-conforming statutes, but specifically improvements like an accessory structure needs to conform to the district. So, if you're basically proposing additional structures, additional site plan improvements, those would have to be conforming to the new zoning district.
So, Brian, can you clarify then? So, under the current zoning, could this property owner construct, construct some sort of accessory structure, but just not the size that they've proposed?
I would think that that's something that can be contemplated. Certainly as an attached structure, because then it becomes part of the existing structure. It would really depend on the specific site plan that's being proposed. All that we can say is what is being proposed is, is not going to conform with those requirements.
I think because the zoning is different for the commercial than what it would be for residential, so they got to meet a higher standard to meet commercial standards.
That's correct.
I have a question. Why did the Planning Commission fail on this? What was the reason that it failed at Planning Commission?
Either Catherine or staff might have a perspective to that.
So, I don't mind speaking to my vote specifically in what I understood at Plan Commission, and that was the applicant could either build something that meets the current use of residential standard, or he could build something to the industrial standard, but what was proposed fits within neither of those. And so, for that reason, I voted no.
So, I'm sorry, follow-up. Changing the zoning from planned industrial to the single-family residential, as Steve, I believe you were saying, and I apologize, maybe I didn't hear you correctly, that it just, it would change exactly what the standards are for whatever structure it is that he would have to, that would, that they would want to build on that property? Is that what I'm understanding?
Sure. And maybe I didn't quite answer your question. I was giving more background to my vote. With the future land use map and the zoning around this property being industrial, to change the zoning back to single-family, you have one lot that's single-family in the whole zone. And the broader answer for me is that, I just want to, I'm trying to say this the right The broader answer for me is that the city has done a lot of planning on what that future use should be in this area, and that we shouldn't just go back on one property and change it for one property. And then to revert to my other answer that I just gave you, my thought process was that the applicant can still build something that he wants or may need on this property. It just, it's not what he proposed is allowed versus either his current residential use or the industrial use that his property is currently zoned for. So, he has options, it's just not what he wanted.
So, we'd have to, if it stays industrial, you'd have to build the industrial standards. If it switches to residential, you'd have to build the residential standards.
Kind of in a difficult part of that intersection of where I'm understanding it too. So, yeah, that's a, it's a difficult area.
But if he wants to build an outbuilding like he's proposing, we're pushing him to a commercial-grade building. So, he has to meet the optics as far as the stone or whatever we have on the outside. Are we pushing to put a sprinkler system in his shed? You know, are we pushing him to, what else are we to now because it's considered a commercial building?
So, I don't think I've been clear right now. What I understood at Plan Commission was because the current non-conforming use is residential, the applicant can still build something or use his house within those residential parameters. And if I'm wrong on that basis, then the guidance I got at Plan Commission was wrong because, again, that led to how I voted. But that's my current understanding, and so, Mr. Carranza, please correct me now if that's wrong. But if he wants to continue to use his house in a residential manner or build something that meets those residential codes because he has a prior non-conforming use, he can still do that.
That's correct. So, he's able to build to the residential standards. I think the disconnection is, it's certainly, certainly going to be dependent on what's proposed, and that's... proposed, and that's in part because the, the non-conforming structure and non-conforming use ordinance is very specific to that. So without seeing something specific, I can't say he can build that. But what I can say is he is able to, you know, improve his site in a residential manner.
So if he did a stick, a stick-type build garage that was attached to his existing garage, that would fall under the, the current zoning?
Not under the current zoning, no, but it would, it would be permitted under the non-conforming use ultimately standards. But again, it's going to be dependent on the specific requirement or proposal that he's putting forward. I think the key thing to recall here or to consider here is that this really would be a sort of a spot zoning. If you're placing a single residential structure in the context of industrial district, there are other considerations as it relates to improvement to industrial sites adjacent to this property. As they are looking to redevelop, there are different standards for screening certain things and mitigating certain impacts as it relates to that zoning classification. So I think the context here is, is important and making sure to understand that rezoning the individual site as like sort of a spot zoning has impacts throughout the district, not just for the site individually.
I agree totally, but I think we did the same thing to him when we just kind of zoned the whole area commercial. You took somebody who owned a house and now he lives by a different standard than everybody else in the city with his house. I mean, in a way, we're better off taking it, raising it, and putting a commercial building there, or let somebody develop it then.
But, but then you're, you gotta, you have a building that serves a purpose, a residential purpose, and I don't know, to me, it just feels like zoning it residential makes the most sense here. I mean, it's, it's a residential house. It was originally built that way. It continues to be used in that fashion. Why wouldn't we allow them to, to use that lot in a residential way instead of making them live up to industrial standards?
So to hit on that point exactly, Mr. Waters, the applicant can still use his property in a residential way?
Then why are we seeing this motion?
Because... I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth when he hasn't said anything, so I don't know.
Okay.
As I'm reading through all these materials and looking at, you know, and listening to the conversation, it seems to me that, you know, while clearly it was built to be a residence before some kind of industrial zoning was placed upon it, however, that is many years ago, and the information that we received, the current owner, it was industrial zoning when the current owner acquired it. So they, you know, would be aware of those limitations, and it sounds like there are other options for continuing the use and potentially having an accessory building on the property, but just not the one that has been proposed. So I guess for those reasons, I would not be in favor of rezoning it.
Any further comment? Comments, questions? Seeing none. A positive vote on ordinance 1243 will change it to a residential. A negative vote will keep it industrial. All right, just to make sure we're all clear on that. Can we have a roll call on ordinance 1243, please?
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Quidnow?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1244. This is the third reading. Misty, can you read ordinance 1244?
Ordinance 1244, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 24607140734025. Owner, Robert Mangan. Vacant land east of Brewster Drive and northeast of Tyrenina Park Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. This is a third reading, so we will need a motion to move forward.
I move to accept ordinance 1244, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Do I need to read the parcel identification number?
I think we're good.
All right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Curler. All right. City staff comment? Back to Brian?
Yep, Brian, could you give us an overview of this item, please?
For sure. So there's quite a bit of back history on this particular property. It was contemplated for sort of a planned development district for several different phases of the site. At the time of those approvals, this particular parcel, as it relates to the overall site, was contemplated specifically for single-family residential, in part to provide sort of a buffer to the residential properties that are located adjacent to the site along County Highway V. And so outlining, you'll see sort of in the memo, a concept plan of what could potentially be contemplated on the site for a structure. This is solely a rezone, so that's not to say that that specifically is what's going to be constructed, but more to provide some context to the decision-making for you guys. And then ultimately, the finding effects are outlined there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions as it relates to the specifics on it.
So this motion failed at the planning commission as well? So any questions or comments?
Can I ask why it failed again?
Do you have?
Yeah, I think it goes back to the future land use map and the planning that's been done long-term on this site. I think it's been, it was zoned a single-family when the applicant bought the site. They knew what the zoning was, all of those considerations. Also, a lot of the adjacent landowners did come out and they had a lot to say about the effects on their own property if this was changed to a multifamily site.
If I may add one caveat there, it was zoned, this, this larger parcel was zoned as single-family residential because in reliance on the rest of the development, the rest of the apartment development that was contemplated for kind of the northern and westerly portion, it's all on the same plat map. It was all part of one submittal and the plan for the area generally. So changing this would require a change in that plat, and that wasn't what was contemplated at that time.
I'd like to ask a follow-up, I guess, kind of to that. So, and I think, I think there was some information in the, Brian, in your memo along these lines as well. Was there, or there's some, how do I say, you know, sort of allowances or the way the, the northern part with the apartments was allowed to be developed, that was allowed to go forth in that manner because of the understanding that the southern area would be single-family?
I'd say that the city definitely relied on the designation of single-family in this specific area and contemplation of the entire map being drawn and going through the approval process. Were there special considerations or allowances that were given? I don't really think that that's the case. I'm not for, like, I don't think there's a PDD overlay property. I think that the R312 development is pretty dense, and they kind of envisioned it as moving less dense as it moved away from the interstate towards the city. And that's why the, this area was designated and planned to be R14.
That fits with my understanding at our plan commission meeting.
And then just to reinforce it, I think if I understood what you said, Brian, that the, the diagrams that we have in our attachments that show, you know, 14 different buildings, those are just schematics that you prepared. That's not something that Mr. Mangan submitted as a part of an application, right? That's just would give us an idea of what it might look like if we were to approve this rezone?
So in fact, they did prepare those.
Oh, they did.
And submit those with the application, yes. Oftentimes, you know, to help with contemplation of kind of what they're proposing, which would ultimately be reviewed as part of either a PDD or a building site and operation plan, they'll provide some context sort of in a concept. And so that was provided by the applicant.
Okay, thank you for...
But that's not necessarily something that would be approved by staff. It wasn't reviewed in that context.
Okay, and that's not necessarily how it might ultimately look, but that's just to give, give everyone a picture of what it might be.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right, to clarify, a, a positive vote would be to switch this from single-family R1-4 to the multifamily residence, which is R3-12. A negative vote would essentially, I guess, keep it single-family residence. Makes sense? All right, can we have a roll call on ordinance 1244?
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Motion fails zero to five.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 1245. This is the first reading. Misty?
Ordinance 1245, amending section 80-4, preparation of status statements fee.
Give me a moment. I hit my computer and I lost my screen. Don't you hate it when that happens? I'm going to have to learn how to lock that in there.
Would you like to ask staff to?
It's coming back up.
While you're getting organized.
All right. We don't need a motion because it is the first reading. But sure, so there's staff comment on this since it is the first reading? To give us some background?
Sam, would you mind speaking on this?
The fee schedule for special assessment letters, this is when somebody's purchasing a home within the city, the title company sends over a special assessment request letter. We have to look at the tax bill, we have to prepare the letter, we send it off to the title company that gets put on the closing costs. The title companies charge roughly $75 to $100 to the person purchasing the home. We're charging, currently charging $5 for these letters. And I would say it probably takes Andy at least 15 minutes or so to do all the prep work, and you can see where we called around, actually, Andy called around to the different municipalities to check charges, and the average was 28.8, so $30 for a special assessment letter, not unusual. Again, passed on from the title company. So I'm recommending raising it to $30, and I did put the potential revenue on, on that one, or did I not?
You're the moderator.
$3,900.
For, yeah, for, the potential revenue in a three-year span is $14,000. Raising it to $30 a letter.
And I agree to sponsor this because it just seemed like the burden is being carried by the residents and not the actual users, and it seemed like the user should be carrying this burden. So it seems to make sense to, to move forward with this, so.
I'd like to explain just a bit as well. The, the ordinance that's in front of you, the amendment that's proposed, actually adopts a process to amend that fee through time by council resolution. The ordinance currently states and establishes that the special assessment letter fee is $5. Generally, we'd like to move away from that where ordinance is established fees. In some cases, it's wholly appropriate. In this circumstance, I think we can be a little bit more nimble by adopting resolutions and reviewing it regularly. So that's the proposed ordinance changed tonight, and the, the ordinance that's going in front of you for three readings, it basically removes that $5 charge and states that the council will establish the appropriate fee by resolution from time to time. If this ordinance is adopted at some point in the future, you'll see a resolution from, in front of you that actually does change and address the, the actual amount of the charge. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, would it be appropriate to move to have this go to the second reading so that we could expedite its process to move it to the next meeting, that'd be the third reading, and we could vote on it?
Are you making that motion?
Okay. I move to, to make this a second reading for ordinance, sorry.
Probably I move to a second reading.
I'm going to move that we make it to a second reading at, tonight for ordinance 1245, with preparation to be able to vote on it in the following meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Curler, to move to a second reading tonight, with the third reading being at our next meeting. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call on that?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right.
Would you like me to do the third reading now?
Misty, can you go do the second reading, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, second reading, yes. Ordinance 1245, amending section 80-4, preparation of status statements fee.
All right. So that was the second reading. We'll have our third meeting at the next meeting. Any further comment or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to toss in a comment. I think Attorney Drescher alluded to this, but this is, you know, just one example where a fee is, this precise fee is listed in the ordinance, and I wonder, you know, in our efforts to try to streamline the process for managing our fees, if it would make sense to amend, you know, every place in the ordinance where a dollar amount is listed, or every place that makes sense, and then shift to that model of having them be on the fee schedule, and then the fee schedule can be regularly reviewed by, and, and modified by council resolution.
Generally, I'm supportive of that. I think there are some fees that are appropriately established in, in ordinance, but I'm not prepared to tell you which ones right now.
So it's something we can review?
And we have been looking at fees generally, and I think you can anticipate nominal market increases in a number of fees in the future. We're in a budget crunch, as you're all aware, and alternative revenue sources are pretty desirable, so.
Well, the two we heard tonight seem to be pretty common sense, so those are easy no-brainers, I guess. All right. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. Recommendations for future agenda? So we should have some workshops to go over the budget. We should probably plan for two, and with a third one as a, as an optional meeting that, that we can have, that gives you the flexibility to, to structure it the way you'd like, Drake, if you want to do it in two or three, or if you want to try to do it in two, and then see if we ask for that third meeting, however you would like to structure it. But it probably makes sense to go ahead and set up three, three times at this point.
Sure, yep, it's how quickly the council would like to move forward on it.
How quickly can you move forward on it? The burden's a little bit on you at this point.
I guess, Sam, do you think we should look to have these? I guess, Sam, do you think we should look to have these in, do both of them in October, or, you know, next week might be a little fast to try and get into the, you know, another Tuesday? And I think in October, you know, we could, we could do, you know, we have, on the Wednesdays of off, on the Wednesdays, we can double up on the first and third, do Tuesday and Wednesday on the first and third, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, or we can do the off weeks, off week Wednesdays. So, it would be the 12th and 26th, it looks like, in October.
The 12th is a bad week for me, actually. I'm tied up that week.
Okay.
And then just for scheduling purposes, the court, municipal court, does have this room on the first and third Wednesday of the month from about 6 until generally 7:00, 7:30, around that time.
I don't have the median schedule in front of me, but would it be okay for maybe us to look at a couple, some different dates, different dates and times, and maybe send out like a survey and see when everybody's available and the rooms available?
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
Is there any times in October that's off the table for any of you? For me, it's just that second week.
That second week for me is also a bad week.
Okay.
So, we'll avoid the week of October 12th.
Yeah, the fourth and fifth, I'm at a conference, so I was going to try and call in from my hotel room for that Tuesday night meeting.
For the Tuesday meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So, is it November 1st is the night that we have to vote on the budget, or is that the public hearing night?
Historically, that would be the public hearing night. Historically, was the first meeting in November.
First meeting, which ends up being on the 1st this year.
I have to put out a 15-day publication prior to that meeting. So, that would have to go out the 14th of October.
So, do we have to have things buttoned up by then? No?
You can change the budget after the public hearing.
Okay.
So, you don't have to, it does not, you're not, you don't, you're not necessarily presenting what the final budget is the night of the public hearing, but we will, we'll want it to be.
Just for comment.
Relatively, you know, close, so that the public can comment on it and provide feedback for it. So, we will, I will work with the schedules to attempt to schedule them as early as schedules allow, so that we can get the budget as close to finalized heading into that public hearing as possible. So, we'll get that survey put together and identify the dates that will work, and we will get them on the calendar.
Sounds great. So, Misty will put together some type of survey for us to give feedback. All right, any other recommendations for future agendas? All right. Seeing none. I'd like to get a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, section 1E, deliberation or negotiation, negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Wisconsin statute 19.85, section 1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction. Can I get a motion to move into closed session?
I'll make a motion to move into closed session for the reasons stated.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow, all in favor, please raise your hand. Five oh. Motion carries. We will reconvene after this closed session, but will not come back online to do that, and we'll adjourn after that. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.